Should be joining. Thanks, man. Commissioner Burns should be joining us at some point. In the audience, we have Rick.
Your last name again?
Oldenel. Oldenel. And I'm assuming we have Greg Futter, Kevin Downs, and Sarah Ham. All right, and I guess we'll get right into it. Do we have any public comment on agenda items? Okay, moving on to Joe Peters' contract discussions. Let's start out with Commissioner Fry.
So, from my perspective, we have two questions to answer this morning. The first is, in the draft that I provided to all of you yesterday morning and that I had posted on the website, did that capture all of the modifications and requests that everybody asked for? Both the commissioners and Joe Peters? And then second, assuming that that's the case, then second, at what point do we want to schedule the vote on the contract? So that said, I'll defer to each of you to tell me, because quite honestly, it took me almost eight hours to get through the three-hour meeting to make sure I captured everything, and I think I did, but you all are my editors in this regard on the contract.
Bill, from my perspective, have you got all the changes that we discussed? I'm fine with the final draft or the draft being considered final.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, you know, I'm pretty happy with it as well. Now, I did call the attorney yesterday not to review the contract, but to talk to her about her timeline, because, you know, potentially, we could vote on this as early as a week from today. So I wanted to make sure that if we got it back to her, she has enough time to review it. She said that if she got it today, she would have enough time to review it. So after this meeting, ideally, it would be nice to send it off to her. Now, I forwarded it just to, you know, let her glance at it, and it was probably a fifteen, twenty-minute call that I had with her regarding a couple of different things. And she said she glanced at it, and a lot of the language obviously came from some of her contracts that she shared with you, Bill, but one thing in particular that she had mentioned was that it doesn't clearly define severance in year one, that there is no severance package for the first year. So I just, we have to work on the language there, and she can obviously fix it. And then the other thing that she mentioned briefly was that, you know, if you're offering, trying to think of how she said, if you're offering, somewhere in here, we mentioned that we're offering the benefits, and then they could be taken away, and it doesn't work like that. She said that, once you offer it, then it's, you can't take it back. So I have to find exactly where we mentioned that in the contract.
Yeah, the only place I can think of that that would be is failure to give proper notice. So I'll talk to her about what language. There has to be some penalty, at least from my perspective, and I thought we all agreed. And even Joe agreed, there has to be some kind of penalty for failing to provide proper notice and being in breach, besides the board taking a former chief to court, which we're not going to do. So I think that's the only place that that would be, and the actual wording that we agreed to. And now that I think about it, I don't remember if we actually talked in detail about it. And then I'm looking for the.
There's wording in there, Bill, that talks about if he doesn't provide adequate notice, then he's not he's only allowed pay through the actual hours or days or shifts at work. But I think it's implied there that he forfeits benefits as well. So that was my read of that. You know, that particular comment, but.
In that regard, if we agree that there should be some penalty, such as loss of unpaid benefits, and of course, then termination of of future benefits, like health insurance and such, on the effective date of a resignation, even if it's without notice. If we agree that there's a desire to have some kind of penalty, and she doesn't like the penalty, I can ask her to make some recommendations on other penalties. Maybe it's just a fixed dollar figure.
Yeah, or maybe it has to go to the end of the month or something like that.
Well, again, the same problem we had with Jason. When the employee says, "I'm not coming to work anymore," there's nothing, there's no way to force them to continue doing it, other than some kind of monetary penalty.
Okay, well, you've talked.
You can't put a gun to their head, and we have a couple of amendments in the Constitution that says that involuntary servitude is unconstitutional. My point is, is that when someone gives notice, whether it comports to the contract or not, you can't make them stay to the end of a week, end of the month, or end of the year.
Yeah, that's right. I understand. Well, you can.
So again, my question is, I'm sorry, I think there's a delay. So again, my question is, do we agree there needs to be some kind of financial penalty if proper notice isn't given, recognizing that Joe's going to have this addressed just because of what Jason did last year?
I think that there should be something in there. You know, we got very, we were very fortunate that we had guys step up. I mean, if that, you know, wasn't the case, then, you know, we could be in a lot different position. So I think there should be something in there.
I can't imagine that that was a pass legal, Oscar, yeah, have a penalty for not honoring the notice period. I just, you can, you can, you can try it.
You can ask the attorney, but I doubt that's.
Yeah, I think you could have sent them by saying, "We'll pay you your PTO," for example. If you were to leave tomorrow, we can't, we can, you know, let you put in your sixty-day notice, if you have seventy days, we'll also pay for the PTO that you recruit. That's an incentive to provide the full, the full notice period. But I don't think they're going to be able to, well, let's find out. Let's just ask the question and find out, to what extent can we withhold benefits and things like that? I have seen we're going to have to pay benefits out at least by the end of the month.
Well, again, just recognize that, assuming that no notice was given, and we agreed that we only accrue the PTO at the end of each anniversary year of the contract, that potential penalty is three thousand dollars for one year's worth of PTO, roughly. You take twenty-six divided into seventy-seven thousand dollars, and it's just under three thousand. So it's a relatively small penalty, because that's the only thing that isn't earned and accrued during each pay period. Because during each pay period, he earns and he accrues his pay, and he earns and accrues his his retirement contribution. And if he doesn't work, then he doesn't, he doesn't accrue. So I'll find out what it is that she proposes. So other than severance in the first year that she has potential language for, and penalty for lack of proper notice, any other things that?
Hey, good morning, Bill. Can you hear us okay? Oh, can you hear me now?
Just a second, Bill. We're trying to get Bill Burns on the call.
Yeah, I gathered that.
Good morning, this is Bill. Hey, Bill, can you hear us okay now?
Hey, good morning, Duncan. How are you? Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. I'm going to put you close to the TV here, just because we have two bars over here. So we just started basically the discussion about two, two things that potentially are an issue in the, in the contract. One is that severance needs to be clearly defined for year one, and then the second was that you can't take someone's benefits away. That's what our attorney told us, just briefly looking at it, and then we were just talking about.
Lack of notice.
Yes, lack of notice, and how we're going to handle the lack of notice if, if the chief decides to leave, like, you know, before the sixty days that's required by the contract.
So where we're at is lines ninety-five to ninety-seven in, in the document that you all received yesterday and is posted on the website. So I'm not really clear why that's a problem. But again, if there is, if there is some kind of a forfeiture that we, that at least three of us agree with, then I would propose that we take guidance from the attorney.
I agree. Yes. Yeah, I agree.
And then somewhere around line one oh seven to one oh nine, there presumably would be a sentence added that if it's terminated without cause during year one, no severance payment is owed. That's the probation year.
That's correct.
Yep.
Any other concerns on the document as written? Because once I fix those, then, and we get off the line, then I will forward it to the attorney, Ms. Moonie, and do and ask for a complete legal review.
I just have two questions, and I apologize for missing the meeting two weeks ago. I'll take an unexcused absence on that. I was traveling, I just couldn't get connected, but my two questions, and they may already be in the process of being reviewed, but I think we do need a legal review on the Fair Labor Standards Act aspect of four twenty-four-hour shifts or five twenty-four-hour shifts. I just, I'm struggling with the idea that contract law is going to override FLSA. And so I think it is important for the board to insist upon a legal review of that particular issue.
Michael?
Yeah.
I think it's in the minutes in two different locations where Bill specifically asked for a written opinion on that particular issue. But, but from my review, and I slept here in my house in Virginia, not at the Holiday Inn Express, but from my review of the FLSA, as it relates to firefighters, it exempts a number of hours of being on call, even for wage-grade folks, if they have, I think it's five hours of uninterrupted sleep, if they're providing sleeping facilities, if they're provided meal preparation facilities, and so on and so on. And then second, for any supervisory position, there's three or four criteria that have to be met to make that position exempt, whether it's a firefighter, policeman, or a preacher or anything else. And that is that they have to have supervisory responsibilities, they have to be paid. The number somewhere was twenty-seven thousand roughly a year. I think it's been raised during the Obama years to forty-five thousand as base salary. Has to have the right to, the ability and the right to hire and fire employees, has to have the right to counsel and discipline employees. And of course, our chief has, would have all of those prerequisites. But as I said, I believe it's twice in the minutes, twice on the recording, that Bill specifically asked for a written document from the attorney confirming that.
Yeah, I agree with what you said, and I saw the two requests from Bill Burns. So if that's being done, then we're good. My only other question, and is related to the PTO. I think it had said that everybody agreed that PTO would be awarded at the end of the year. I just don't think that's in line with common employment standards. I think an accrual would be better for the PTO. I just wanted to see if everybody really intended for him to work a full year and then be awarded the eight PTO days.
So to recap, what I believe is on the recording and in the minutes, there was considerable discussion about that. I think Dan and Duncan moved back and forth, but finally settled upon agreeing with, with my recommendation that it be posted at the end of each contract year, rather than the beginning. I was opposed to full posting of, to, at the beginning of the contract year, because then that entitles him to three thousand dollars worth of paid time off. If he terminates, he gets that, that money paid to him, as you all did with Jason's contract. But second, I, I'm reasonably certain that Joe acquiesced in that decision. So if we want to discuss it again, I think as long as the only two options are a, I think the number was point three zero seven something, PTO days per twenty-six pay periods. If we want to accrue that way, I don't have any, any heartburn with that. There was some discussion from, from when I re-looked the the recording, that it would be some kind of a, a bookkeeping nightmare, or that was what sounded like the concern. And I would tell you that I, I believe that the bookkeeper and/or the fire chief were keeping track in an Excel spreadsheet what his accruals were, even if they were accrued at the beginning of the contract year, and presumably, we're subtracting each of his PTO days as they occurred. So I don't see that as a, as a major bookkeeping issue. I don't have feelings one way or the other concerning those two options, if those are the only two options.
I have just a question on how the mechanic works. If, for example, in his first year of employment, is he allowed to go negative? In other words, can he take a PTO day in the first year, and then at the anniversary, instead of getting eight days, if we get seven days?
Again, there is significant discussion about that, and I said, that would normally be in an employee policy document. But what I said was, is that, to me, there's no reason to to limit the ability to do what, what would be essentially advanced PTO, taking PTO before it's, it's earned, or before it's accrued, or before it's posted. To me, that's a policy decision, and as long as all of us agree, first, that he should be allowed to do that, and second, one of the documents that needs to be recreated, because apparently it doesn't exist anymore, is an employee manual, a policy, I think it was actually called Policies and Procedures. And Greg suggested, as a fire service, it should have some other different fancy name, and I didn't write it down during the recording. But my point is, is that the ability to take advanced PTO before it's actually earned, or before it's actually posted, should not, should be allowed, but that's my personal opinion.
So I would, I would venture to say, let's just leave it as would be lump accrual at the end of the, end of the fiscal year, and then just allow flexibility in the policy document. Allow flexibility in the policy document, you know, as necessary to kind of smooth out.
Yeah, that's fine. Look, if Joe has agreed to it, then, you know, I don't want to negotiate against myself. So if he's good with it, I just don't think it's standard. I would probably prefer to see the approval, but if he's agreed, then I'm fine. I just wanted to bring it up as a point that I wanted to discuss.
Michael, I think he's agreed to it with the expectation, as the discussion was, that we would allow advanced PTO, or being able to go into the negatives.
Yeah, fair enough. I mean, I think it's the same accounting procedure, whichever way you do it, so.
Yes, sir. I agree with you. It is. It's still a spreadsheet that tracks whatever the beginning balances and the subtractions, and then future additions. The other thing it did is it finessed, at least during this two-year contract, any requirement to discuss leave accrual, sorry, PTO accrual, PTO carryover into future, future contract years and so on, because by definition, any vacation time that's posted on day three sixty-five of the contract has to carry forward into the next year. So were those the only three areas in the document that had concerns based on what our previous discussions were and what Ms. Mooney identified as potential issues?
Yeah, that's all I had. And just to reiterate, she just briefly glanced at it, you know, while I was on the phone. So she may have more constructive criticism. So, but most of the language didn't come from her existing contracts, she thought.
Yes, it was, the only things that were direct lifts from Jason's last contract talked about the, from line one twenty-seven to one thirty-three about the shifts and FLSA, and the direct lift for the new paragraph E, working staffing, vacancy shifts, and one other that I can't recall right now. So other than three things, three paragraphs that were lifted from the last contract that were unique to us, they're all her words. And I believe I got the, the correct start date we talked about was the sixth of June, line thirty-six.
Yes, yes, I believe that's what was discussed when Joe.
Okay. So that being said, then I think there needs to be a vote on the contract. Presuming, two things, my motion would be that we approve the, this first draft of the contract, pending legal review and response, and written opinions related to FLSA and the four shifts.
So moved.
I made the motion. I need a second.
So are you seconding? I guess I seconded. All right, so we have a motion and a second. We have any further discussion? For the record, Bill dropped off here with the, I don't know if it's my service or his service. He's not here again. Can't get a hold of him. We have any further discussion regarding this?
We should, absolutely, yeah.
Double comment. We're ready now.
I just want to make an observation that may benefit Bill in his negotiations, especially with the lawyer. Because I understand one of the issues is this issue of forfeiture of benefits like PTO if the guy doesn't give proper notice, for example.
Yeah.
If you phrase it as a penalty, in other words, if he gets it upfront, and he phrases it as a penalty, and sometimes the law, you know, get a lawyer. Sometimes the law doesn't like privileges. So perhaps, Bill, what you might, this is Rick, but like.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time understanding, because there's a lot of other background noise. Could you, I, I think I got everything until you started to say, and Bill, I would recommend.
Well, my understanding is, the issue on the table is how to phrase the contract so that if the guy does not fulfill contract provisions such as notice, he doesn't get his benefits like PTO, if you phrase it in a way that he gets it granted, and then there's a penalty for non-compliance, that may be hard to enforce. But if you phrase it in the flip reverse, where that compliance with the contract, i.e. notice, is a condition proceeding to being entitled to the benefits, then it may be a better way. And I would suggest that you suggest that to a lawyer, I'm not a Florida lawyer, of course. So that'd just be my thought, is a way to get around that potential catch-22 problem.
I'll make a note and ask her what the, again, how best to phrase that, that sentence? Because our intent is some financial penalty for failing to provide proper notice.
Yeah, and I think the concept of a penalty is what I try to avoid. I try to make it as a condition proceeding to entitlement to the benefit as opposed to granting and taking away.
Right. No, I understand. I'm sure she will, if there's a legal language that will allow it, she'll figure out what that is.
Okay, so we have a motion second.
Yep, motion. Bill joined though, before we, he said he's going to try to join on Zoom in two minutes. So if you have any other public input.
They missed the vote by two minutes.
Yeah, let me just wait, and we're going to get out of here record time anyways.
Anyone in Zoom have any feedback or public comment? Well, while, while we're waiting on.
Bill, you've gone tilt on us.
While we're waiting on Bill Burns to join. So the district purchased a rocks or, as our next paramedic.
It's not on the agenda. You'd have a technical violation if you talk about it.
Right.
Sorry. I believe there's nothing that precludes you from talking to other islanders or posting something in Facebook or emailing us, as long as we don't respond.
Excuse me, this is the, I, I don't think that the chair announcing recent hires or daily business is, needs to be on the agenda if, if there's no vote taken. I think, I think you were shut off in error.
I, I'm repeating the same thing that Bill Burns said two weeks ago, when Dan asked the question, could he talk about something related to accessway maintenance at this meeting? And Bill Burns said, "Not unless it's noticed."
Well, I think that that was, that concerned a decision to be made by the commissioners. What the chairman was doing at this instance was just telling commissioners and the public what has happened. And I think that's more reporting than introducing a new subject.
Yeah, I don't care. Duncan should do whatever Duncan.
You know, the sunshine laws and all that.
Duncan, I'd appreciate getting the island news, like what's going on with the ambulance and the new. Duncan, I'd appreciate uh getting the island news, like um what's going on with the ambulance and the new hire.
I agree with you. I mean, it's the same thing as as if I were to send an email, as long as we don't, I guess, have a discussion about it. I think.
Exactly.
Fine, so as an announcement, um, the district has purchased a Roxor, um, I call it, oh, no, it's like a Jeep for the paramedic vehicle. It will be our beach buggy and it will be able to go access to the state preserve. Um, it's made by Mahindra, um, which is, you know, a a large um Indian company that um has um, they they make tractors, they make equipment. Um, and anyway, um, they uh, we're looking forward to this as a as a better option because um they're made a lot stronger, they're heavier duty, so hopefully this will last a lot longer than the previous Polaris did, which only lasted a couple of years. And then the Kawasaki, one of the ones that was leased out to us uh from FEMA, that already uh had a shifting um issue and has some rust problems. So hopefully the Mahindra is being undercoated right now and hopefully that will be a a nice solution. I thought it was a great idea um by Jesse and a couple of other of uh others on Fire Department. Um, and recently, um the police department and I think it was Daytona or somewhere somewhere up north has been using them and they've been really pleased and uh other districts are doing the same thing. Um, I see that Bill Burns has now joined the call. Bill, if you want to unmute yourself, if you have any um any comments pertaining to the contract, I know you were you were cutting in and out throughout the meeting. Bill Burns, can you hear us? You're still on mute.
Okay.
How's that? Yeah, the.
Is you okay, Bill?
Yes, guys, I can. Thank you, and my apologies for the inconvenience. I was told that the I'd be in and out of the doctor's office in five minutes. Uh, that turned out not to be truthful.
He's all been there.
So anyway, I I called in. Uh, I was shocked to find out we no longer have a landline at the station. The nine hundred number is no longer in service, so that was a failure. That being that that what it is.
Can repair anything on the island yet, so that's the reason for that, just so you know.
Okay, um, anyway, all I heard was you Duncan, you saying something about the attorney taking away somebody's benefits. And then I heard part of a discussion between Bill and Mike about PTO days. Everything else was completely broken up and garbled.
Bill, would you like to summarize real quick?
Uh, yes. I think what we decided is is uh for lines, the sentence uh that sent lines ninety-five to ninety-seven, uh, there the attorney needs to give uh some uh proposed language for some kind of a incentive uh for payment of unpaid benefits such as PTO uh to give proper notice. Uh, Rick, did I say that correctly?
Yeah, I believe so.
Uh, and then second, uh somewhere around lines uh one oh eight to one ten adding a sentence that says uh that uh termination without cause during year one of the contract uh does not receive severance payment. And uh the discussion about PTO was around line moment. Uh, somewhere right around line one seventy-seven to one seventy-eight in the contract um that we would post or or show accrual of of uh paid time off at the anniversary, at the end of the first anniversary of each anniversary year of the contract. So years one and two. Mike's question was, uh, shouldn't it it accrue uh by pay period uh or uh and then my comment was uh that I didn't like uh posting it at the beginning of a of a contract, which meant that it uh of a year, because it meant that the person had had uh had that coming to them, whether they give notice or not, whether they've earned it or not. Uh, I think where we finally left that was we're gonna leave it to no change to that section. Uh, and because uh at least three of us agreed uh at the last meeting two weeks ago and Joe acquiesced. Mike, did I did I recap that correctly?
Yeah, that's good. Thanks, Bill.
Okay. So I think those are the only three areas in the contract that requires further work.
One other uh item of note is the that Mike pointed out, they're stressed uh that we need to have the legal review of the Paralegal Standards Act and our proposed four shifts or four uh or chess per point per week.
Uh, again, that would be in the email transmittal to the attorney. Uh, and as as was mentioned, uh, Bill asked for that, uh, I believe twice during the uh the meeting two weeks ago. Uh, and it's in the recording and in the minutes.
And so uh we also.
I'm sorry, has it has has the request been made to the attorney yet?
No, I have not made the request. Because it, when I finished listening to the recording, it uh sounded like that that there might that we might spend this meeting uh rehashing all the things that were discussed at the uh at the last meeting uh for for Michael's benefit. Uh, but it sounds like um that was.
First time we're seeing a draft of the contract, correct?
A a full draft of the contract, yes. What you saw uh two weeks ago was um the uh initial working draft uh that did not have, uh, and then the the accompanying four or five pages of uh of comments and discussion uh that talked about uh where Joe or I or both of us uh desired to make uh proposed changes in the language uh from the attorney's prior contract that I used as the baseline. Actually, I used two different contracts uh and inserted a couple of paragraphs from that one primarily about residency on the island. So yes, this is the first time uh that I what I would call a a clean six-page document of a proposed contract has been put in front of everyone. Uh Duncan, you said you provided it to the attorney, but that wasn't from the legal review to start. Uh, it was just background discussion, I think you said.
Primary focus of my conversation was to figure out what Maggie's turnaround time would be. Um, because, you know, I know that it it would be ideal to have a vote um in a week from today um after having this draft, but I didn't know if 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 she was either gonna be available or um have time to to review it. So if we get it to her today, she says she will have a a final contract by mid next week.
Yeah, she'll have it uh uh early afternoon after we get off the call, assuming that we vote to submit it. Which is what my my the motion that's on the floor is now. I think.
Correct. So we have a motion by um Commissioner Fry, yes, and second by Commissioner Hammond. Um, and then we had some discussion, so that's where we are, Bill.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have any further discussion?
Well, I'm just gonna repeat what I said at several times at the last meeting, but amend it now is that we are going into uncharted territory with FLSA. We've always had somebody who has been on duty at the station twenty-four hours with the exception of Bob Canary, but back then FLSA apparently was not an issue. That being said, we I had asked for an opinion as to what, you know, FLA standards and protocols were if we had somebody who was working four shifts per week, but only at the station a a small percentage of those hours. Now I'm reading, you know, that uh there's a proposal to perhaps in try to increase that to five shifts per week. So I really think we need to find out what the FLSA requirements are before we go too much farther and get, you know, ha- and have to start over. And, you know, that's that's just me, but I'd rather have the Ts and Is out there before we try to cross them.
Well, won't that be flushed out in the legal review? I I I assume that that would be one of the primary things that that uh that she would look at.
Why I asked for this two weeks ago, thinking we would have it. So that we would have ideas of how to structure the contract.
I agree, and and I think we're being cautious. I think Bill Fry would be cautious uh by uh waiting until we have this discussion to submit the document, but that is what it is. And and I think we can move forward. Uh, especially with what Duncan indicated that that she would be able to turn us around and get us a a readout by middle of next week. So I think let's um, let's let Bill Fry finish up this and submit it today.
And then when you submit that email, um, to also, you know, ask for the opinion, you know.
Yes, of course.
Yeah, okay. Just my observation, you know, when I've dealt with FLSA in the past, it's usually gone to a labor law specialist. I don't know what this movie's specialty is in labor law. Uh, but just an observation that may be, you know, she may wanted to go to an outside attorney. And if that's the case, we may not be able to get it done by next Friday, so we would cancel the meeting on Friday and just push to the next week or whatever.
Which was the reason we in this request uh two weeks ago to schedule this meeting, we put in extra meetings to deal with that that kind of thing.
Correct. Okay, so um all in favor to move forward with um our first draft?
Just for legal for legal review.
Correct, and submit and submit it to the attorney for um review. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll abstain.
Okay, Bill Burns abstains. So four to zero. Um, we will have Bill Fry uh email that over and of course, um, ask the question about that FLSA. Um, now, Bill, I I did see you had Bill Fry, excuse me, I did see that you posted um a memo on the website um and sent uh sent it out to us regarding um your opinion. Um, did you want to speak to that or?
Yes, since uh based on uh the motion that just passed and the uh discussion we've had the last five minutes. I don't think this meeting is where we're going to um actually approve the contract and delegate to you and to Van and uh just to s- to get uh to provide it to Joe Peters for signature. My, I I told Joe, and I don't know if Joe's on the call. I he wasn't at the beginning for last time I looked. I I told Joe two and a half weeks ago, I I told Joe almost four weeks ago, um, when we started talking uh numbers and his preference that that the same thing that I've said at every meeting since we started this is that in my mind high uh uh pay and benefits means higher uh shifts on on the island committing to being on call. And um what I told him was is that uh from my perspective, it it did not his numbers and his number of shifts on call on the island, um, scheduled on call on the island uh would not meet um my the the my desires in in the way of getting a vote for me uh on this contract uh to approve it. I've told him that that um a- and I I think I said it in in the document. Uh, I told him that um the the uh back in May, June, a year ago, I I said during various meetings, various monthly meetings and told islanders uh once I made the decision to run for the seat that I believed that uh Jason's contract um that was being discussed, May, June, July, August, September, a- and then approved at the October meeting was un- unaffordable if the referendum failed. This contract is depending on where you use the baseline, what number you use to calculate, somewhere between twenty-four and thirty-four thousand dollars uh more expensive than Jason's last contract. Uh, and so I still have the same perspective. Uh, sitting at the table hasn't changed that. Uh, this contract uh is potentially unaffordable. Uh, and what I don't understand uh in my discussions with uh uh with Joe is he continues to say, and I think he said it again uh two weeks ago in answer to some of of uh Bill's specific questions about uh what did he mean about being on call uh and on scheduled call but not sleeping in the station and so on, uh that during days, during nights, five, six and seven, or days, five, six and seven. If he wasn't in the fire station already, um, he would make a decision based on the call that came in either on his phone through the nine-one-one app or on the radio or or both. I'm sorry. Sorry, I thought someone said something um that uh he would make a determination whether it was uh a serious enough event. Fire, of course, uh, and I think he also talked about cardiac and respiratory uh distress uh as other examples that he would definitely um respond to, even if he if he was on island. If he wa- hadn't had an adult beverage or any other reason to not be available to respond, uh that he would in fact respond. So when I I I keep asking him what, why does he think day night five is different than nights one, two, three or four? And uh the response I get is is work-life balance. Uh, but if he's gonna listen to the call and potentially respond anyway, I I don't, I don't understand it. But again, from my perspective, same thing I've told you all before, each twenty-four hour shift that we have to pay a part-time firefighter costs us around twenty-five to twenty-seven thousand dollars uh a year for one shift per week for fifty weeks. I use fifty weeks in the calculation because Joe has uh will have two weeks of PTO, which means that two of those weeks we we have to pay anyway. So um the other thing that that I pointed out to Joe and and is at towards the bottom of the mem- of the memo uh on the third page is that from my perspective, uh, this, again, from my perspective, I I feel like the contract is twenty-five thousand dollars too expensive unless a fifth on-call shift is is added. Uh, and again, my viewpoint on that is uh different from Bill Burns that that being on call doesn't mean in the station or sleeping in the station. It just means on the island able to respond. Um, I believe that 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 extra twenty-five thousand dollars that we have to use to pay for a part-time person recognizing that that uh this contract is about a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars total. And Jason's last contract was about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars total, I think. I I don't have the memo in front of me right now. But that that twenty-five or thirty thousand dollar difference uh I uh puts at risk any kind of a hope for a five percent or or so raise to the part-time employees. Uh, and when when I reused his higher numbers, I I then considered that if Joe's higher expectations to live on the island and to be on call for four shifts or would apply to a part-time chief, uh, sorry, a full a second full-time chief, that I I wasn't sure that was would be affordable at all this year. So there are multiple impacts financially that I, I see. But the bottom line comparison is, this is a more expensive contract than Jason's last contract. I believed it was, that one was unaffordable. I have no choice but to say I believe this one's unaffordable without changes. My last comment is that when I listened to the, the recording from the, the 10th of March meeting where I was authorized to negotiate, three or four of you said that I should guard against negotiating either on price lower or shifts more. And Joe, Joe alluded to what my, that I wasn't his negotiator, I, I was the contract facilitator. Since I had no authority to negotiate anything, every top, every clause, every dollar figure, every number that's in, in the six pages had to be approved by at least three commissioners. So as it stands, absent any kind of a, a change in the numbers, I will be a no vote on contract when it comes up. I, I did vote to send it to, for legal review because it, it has to go to legal review. My issue isn't the idea of hiring Joe. In fact, I told Joe, I, I think he would be a great fit. My issue is the money.
So you, you say that, that Joe's contract is more expensive, you know, so 161.5 versus 138.5. But if you look at per shift, you know, that, well, according to my calculation, you know, Joe's including benefits and all that, you're looking at about $776 per shift versus Chief Martin, which would have, he would have had a shift of about $1,044, $1,144 per shift. So I think when you say it's more expensive, I mean, you know, yes, if you say the contract itself is, is more, but he's working four days versus 2.3 per week. So
And, and at least one of us vehemently was opposed to his reduction from three and a half shifts to two and a third shifts. As I said two weeks ago, I believe using that hours or that number of shifts as the, as the baseline is wrong-minded. In the documents that I've created for you since we started this almost two months ago now, I gave you baseline figures of fiscal 22 dollars with fiscal 21 shifts worked. By that, I mean, I assumed that, that, that no matter what, we were going to reset the, the number of shifts worked from two and a third to three and a half at, at a minimum. And then I then also gave you the numbers of what Joe's contract in fiscal 23 would cost us. And Van's comment, I think, was, well, the total cost of the contract is, is snack, snack, is right in the middle between the 800 roughly, I'm rounding the numbers just to make it easier. Roughly $800,000 that, that the prior board approved in fiscal 22 a year and a half ago at the September meeting, roughly 800,000 in budgeted pay and benefits compared to $900,000 budgeted in pay and benefits for this fiscal year. That is almost immaterial since Jason resigned with short notice and, and didn't finish the contract here. Contract is in breach. So in my mind, you shouldn't be doing an average calculation of what each shift is, is valued at based on Jason's two and a third shifts, because I think at least two of us were elected to the board. That what may have been one of the reasons that we won election is taxpayers and voters were unhappy with how little Jason was on the island. That may not be true, maybe something else. But if you look at the, at the bottom line, total value of pay and benefits for the entire district, that's the baseline that should be used. This is more expensive than fiscal 22 was.
And it's probably more expensive than 21 or 20 or 19. But it, it really depends on where you pick the comparison at. So I, I think Billy, you've made your position clear. I think we respect that. And I would suggest we I suggest we move forward. I don't want to labor this conversation. Okay, do we have any other? Any other feedback or discussion regarding the contract for Joe Peters?
Sorry, it's like I dropped, just as you said, probably more expensive than fiscal 21. And yes.
Your filter, your filter kicked in. No, Bill, I was just saying, I respect your, I respect your opinion. I think you're, you're, you're you know, very focused on the, the dollars and cents, and that's good. We need, we need your, your, your opinion along those lines. I think my personal perspective, I think the, we're talking about a very few amount of dollars that we can recover through different means, you know, community involvement and, you know, donations. More fun runs, whatever we want to do, we can close that gap to, to make this, to make this work. Joe is an excellent candidate. I don't think there's any disagreement with that. And you know, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that this, that we wrap this thing up next week. So with that. Yeah. Any other comments from either Bill Burns and Michael and stuff? Any? All right. All right. Moving forward, do we have any public input on non-agenda items? All right. Our next meeting date would, will be this upcoming Friday, April 7, April 14. April 21st is a regular scheduled meeting and April 28th is another special meeting at 10 a.m. in case we need to continue the discussions and contract negotiations with Mr. Peters. So it's my expectation that we'll probably vote on April 7th on the contract. May have a motion to adjourn.
Maybe we adjourn.
Wait a second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's the time. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.